Hi, Katie Haven, can you hear me? Hi Katie, would you like to testify this evening? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Perfect, thank you. Hi Drew, can you hear me? Hi Barry Stromberger, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Would you like to testify this evening?
I would.
Alright, I'll mark you down, thank you very much. Hi Laura Super, can you hear me? Hi Laura Super, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Would you like to testify this evening?
Sure.
Hi John Molena, can you hear me? Hi John Molena, can you hear me? Hi Jean White, can you hear me? No. You just have to...
Is anyone speaking or am I supposed to be able to hear?
Who said that? Hi Andrew, can you hear me? Hi Haley, can you hear me? Hi, I just admitted a call-in user, can you please state your name for the record? Hi, I just admitted a call-in user, can you state your name for the record please?
Yeah, this is Marcy Stamper, Metcalf Valley News.
Thank you Marcy, would you like to testify this evening?
No. I was trying to get admitted via my computer, but I guess that is not going to work. If there is anything visual, I guess I would prefer that.
It should work, I'm letting everybody in one at a time to find out if they're going to speak tonight.
Oh, well, so maybe you'll get up to me on the application because it's just saying I have to wait to be admitted.
Yep, I will do that when I see you. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Ann.
Hi Mary, can you hear me?
Excuse me?
Mary, would you like to testify this evening? Mary, Iglesia, can you hear me?
Yes, yes I can.
Would you like to testify?
Yes, I'd like to testify.
Would you like to testify? Okay, thank you very much, sorry about that. Robert Morris, can you hear me? Robert Morris, can you hear me?
Yes.
Would you like to testify this evening?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Hi Easton, can you hear me? Hi Easton Branham, can you hear me? Hi Jan Young, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Would you like to testify this evening Jan?
No, I submitted a written comment earlier this morning.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Hi Julie Palm, can you hear me? Hi Julie Palm, can you hear me? Hi, I just submitted a call-in user, can you state your name for the record please?
Hi, hi Apple.
Thank you Heidi, would you like to testify this evening?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Okay Chairman, everybody has been entered into the meeting. There were some that did not answer, so we might want to at some point go back and ask if they wish to testify.
Did you get my answer Angela?
Um, hi Dick, it's good to hear you.
Did you get my answer?
Did you testify tonight?
Correct, I put it in the chat because you had answered that question of me.
Okay, I got you down Dick, thank you very much for being patient.
No problem.
Angela, this is Melanie Rowland, and you admitted me quite a while ago, but you didn't ask if I wanted to testify, and I would like to testify.
Okay, sorry about that Melanie, we got you down.
Thank you.
This is Easton Branham, I would also like to testify.
I think that we've resolved the technical issues and we will come out of recess to the comprehensive plan meeting. There are a few special items I'd like to go over before we start. They are in the room here, masks are required. All speakers when they are come up to speak or come online to speak, please speak clearly, give your name, address, where you live, for the record. All comments should be addressed to the hearing body, which is the planning commission. All comments should be relevant to the application and should not be of a personal nature. Each speaker will be given a five-minute time limit. Angie will just cut you off at five minutes. Repetitive comments, please avoid them. And also if you have submitted a written comment, please allow others that have not to testify verbally. For those organizations, please just have one representative of your organization speak for your group. Any unruly behavior disruptive to the process, Angie will just mute you. Meeting will end at 9:00 PM. And with that, I will turn it over to Director of Planning Pete Palmer to give staff reports and technical information.
You have all the authority you wish.
Is the mic working, can you guys all hear okay?
Is it on?
Is that on? Can you guys hear me over there?
Aight.
Can the people on the phone hear you, that's kind of the question.
Do you have a way to check the answer, does everybody can hear me that's online?
Hi, can everybody hear Pete that's on the line?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening everybody, I'm Pete Palmer of the Director of Planning Department. We're here to present the new draft of the comprehensive plan. And I just wanted to go over some of the things that were changed in this plan. There were substantial changes made. As far as the alternates go, we did not change any of the alternates. The map did not change, however, alternate four, which was proposed by the Metcalf Valley Citizens Council, did not have a map with it. So alternate four does not have a map, I just wanted to point that out. Real quick, I'm going to go over some of the substantial changes from the 2014 draft. It included the economic development element, which was a new element, that included the introduction goals and objectives. And then reference to the shoreline master program in the appendix of the new draft. We have the water resource inventory areas, which we added goals and objectives for protecting the water supply from existing and future uses. Other goals and objectives for protecting water quality and protecting the extreme water resource along with objectives for that also. We added in a section about wildfire. We updated the introductions to include the most recent incidences since 2014. We have added objectives that have to do with land use patterns and wildfire management to lessen the impact of smoke that results from the forest fires. For the forest lands, we've added objectives for forest health collaboration and participation. In the mineral lands category, again, we added the objective to ensure that mineral lands have adequate access and are excited to be compatible with existing homesites. We have critical areas where we added objectives referencing current soil samples, the channel migration zone, objectives to further protect aquifer recharge areas, and goals and objectives to protect fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. In the land use element, we updated the introduction. We added objectives to support affordable housing studies and shortages. Objectives to encourage and support farmer's housing and objectives to protect ag lands from the impacts of incompatible uses. In the rural lands category, we added goals and objectives to ensure residential developments are consistent with the rural designation. And we also added goals and objectives to achieve the best mix of uses in a rural setting. In the unincorporated towns and neighborhood commercial centers, we added goals and objectives to manage residential expansion while protecting water quality and quantity. We added goals and objectives to create a pathway for future neighborhood commercial centers to meet the local needs of residences. In the city expansion areas, we added goals and objectives to coordinate and cooperate with local government. And then in the establishing future more completely planned areas, we added goals and objectives to foster joint planning efforts at a community advisory level. We added a recreation plan element, which includes introduction in reference to the most current Okanagan County Recreation Plan in the appendix of the comprehensive plan. We added a transportation element with goals and objectives pertaining to providing safe, sustainable, and integrated multi-model transportation systems for travelers. And goals and objectives to be researched to reflect supporting economic development, environmental, and community transportation needs. We added goals and objectives to support the protection of long-term viability of general aviation airports and essential public facilities, including the protection of the aviation community, neighboring property owners and the general public's health, safety, and welfare. We added a military training route that included the introduction and goals and objectives to support coordinating planning efforts with the Department of Defense. And then the capital facilities, we added goals and objectives to achieve and maintain a desired quality of life and vision for Okanagan County to provision of public facilities. Goals and objectives to coordinate land use planning and public facilities, planning and management for growth and the availability of public facilities. Goals and objectives to protect the health and environmental quality through appropriate design and installation of public facilities. Goals and objectives to ensure funding to support prioritized public facilities and services and the mechanisms for collecting fees or revenues as established. And also goals and objectives to ensure capital facility element is consistent with other county, local, regional, and state adopted plans. And so the last thing I just wanted to kind of update everybody on was some of the actions that were adopted or enacted since the first comprehensive plan draft in 2014. The Board of County Commissioners passed ordinance 2020-7, which amended the official zoning map for Okanagan County and the lower Metcalf, changing the one acre minimum to five acre minimum. They adopted ordinance 2020-3, which placed interim controls in the Okanagan County zoning code by adopting subsection one listing the upper Tuck Basin, Lower Tuck Basin, and Tamarack Springs Basin and Ria 49 is water availability study areas. And it further placed interim controls which prohibit applications for the division of lands pursuant to Title 16 of the Okanagan County Code. The purpose of that interim control is determined, one, if the current use of permitted exempt wells has impaired the ability of senior water right holders to obtain the surface waters which they are legally entitled. And if the projected use of permitted exempt wells will likely impair the ability of senior water right holders to obtain the surface waters which they are legally entitled. Ordinance 2020-143 was passed by the Board of County Commissioners, which adopted the recreation plan for Okanagan County. Ordinance 2020-6 was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, which enacted the following interim land use controls applicable to Water Resource Inventory Number 48 in the Metcalf Valley, with the exception of the Conde River influence that prohibits the subdivision of lands according to the provisions of County Code Title 16 and RCW 5817. We, since the Okanagan County Critical Area Ordinance of 2016 was never adopted, the Critical Area Ordinance was updated and submitted to the Department of Defense to trigger the 60-day review. And following the public hearings that we already have in the queue, we'll be starting that public process to have the Critical Areas Ordinance fully adopted along with the public hearing requirements. And we also adopted and was approved through Department of Ecology the Ria 49 watershed time adendum, which that was again completed and approved through by Department of Ecology. So that's kind of some of the big things that happened in this new draft. And we're really hoping that, you know, we're going through a lot of the comments that we received today, we have a lot of positive things being said and pointed out in this new draft. And so we're just hoping to be able to get through this process so we can start into the next of all the things and looking at the actual regulations of the zoning code following the hopeful adoption of the comprehensive plan. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the chairman.
Thank you Pete. So with that, I will go down the list of those who have indicated an interest to testify tonight. Remember that when you have an open mic, that please state your name and where you're from for the record, and you will have five minutes to speak. With that, we'll just go down the line of those who have indicated an interest. And the first one up is Isabel Spoon.
I had to unmute her, so it'll take her a second.
Isabel, are you there?
Hi Isabel, can you hear us? I sent you a request to unmute, it's your turn to speak.
Does it make any difference which squares you up?
I'll give the next person back to you.
Okay, we will reserve a spot for Isabel, we'll go to the next one. Dick Ewing.
So while I would like to put in some verbal comments, I have put in written comments already. So if it gets a little, if you get through the people that want to speak, I will speak towards the end.
Okay, I will, we will see how many people and what sort of timeline we have left. Thank you very much for acknowledging that you've already submitted a written comment. Next up is John Crandall.
Can folks hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you Planning Commission for holding this public hearing. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work that has gone into the development of this draft of the comprehensive plan. I think first off, it's much improved over previous iterations, and I just appreciate the willingness to incorporate feedback. And I look forward to more of the same based on comments that I'm sure you have received and will receive tonight. I'll be brief, the point I want to bring up is in relation to critical areas. And specifically, as we look at water quality in the face of the very real changes that will come about through climate change with changes in our hydrograph, both the timing and magnitude of water runoff through our watersheds, but also the quality of that water as well. And one aspect that has been, is not included in this comprehensive plan, and I think it would be of benefit to include, is the recognition of cold water refuge areas, thermal refuge areas within our streams. So we have sources of cold water that we can identify as of today. And into the future, these sources of cold water will become more and more important for both the fish and wildlife. So we have several endangered species of fish in our streams that are cold water-dependent species. Some more than others, but all are very dependent on cold water to complete their life history. And these cold water sources that we have at present are vitally important moving forward. As our systems will warm, they are already beginning to do so. If we have hopes of retaining these species in any kind of current form or, you know, getting towards recover of these species, identification, protection, and conservation of these cold water refugia is vitally important. And I think that they are important enough and critical enough that they should be designated as their own critical area. And I don't know if there's like an overarching pick list of critical areas that you can get from the state, but I think adding those in as their own, or at least having several specific objectives within that, within the critical area section that relate to thermal refugia, cold water refugia, is very warranted. And the next point I want to make is, has to do with the more completely planned areas. You know, right now, we have two in Okanagan County, but yet the document talks about having many distinct communities within Okanagan County. And I think the fact that there are only two existing says a lot about what has happened prior and the energy that's gone into defining those areas. But my sense is there are several more of these areas that would make sense, whether they're subunits or their own specific designations, there are several. For example, the lower Metcalf watershed from Gold Creek down to the confluence with the Columbia. If you take a look at the parcel maps and how that land has been divided down there, and think about how development could occur and how water availability exists within that area, you're looking at a really giant train wreck of development. And it, it's easy for me to see and look at it that it's just not tenable to have that type of development in that area. And so that would be an example of something that rather than having the complan say, "We're open to this and we can support it," but actually trying to bring that forward and actually doing more outreach within the county to develop more of these more completely planned areas. I think by doing this, you'll gain a lot of information about, from the local communities, getting their involvement. getting their involvement in specific areas, rather than trying to bring in comment from the whole county on specific areas, but actually getting the folks that live there involved in the process. So again, I would commend you on this iteration of the comp plan. It's great to see, and I'm hoping it can be improved more, and to be a stronger document that can guide the future development within the county. Thank you.
Next up is Maggie Kuhn.
Greetings, can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Well, thank you also for taking the time this evening. My name is Maggie Kuhn. I live 3.35 Twist River Road up in the Metow Valley, and I have had the opportunity over about the last 45 years to observe the incredible importance of the kinds of decisions that are before you tonight. The comprehensive planning and zoning for the county is such, has such a defining influence on how we grow and develop. And I think we here in the Metow have benefited enormously from very thoughtful and visionary people in the County Commission and the Planning Commission way back all those years ago that saw the importance of this and really thought carefully about it. So like John Crandall, I want to commend the improvements in this version of the plan. I would like to state at the outset that I fully support Alternative Four, as outlined in the draft environmental impact statement. To me, clearly, Alternative One should not be considered as an option, given the extraordinary pace of change that we are seeing in our community. I have just three points that I wanted to highlight tonight in areas where I think there can be significant improvements in the draft. First of all, really recognizing the implications of climate change for water availability. I think the plan really needs to recognize limitations on legally and physically available water to serve development in the county. I think that it needs to be stronger in encouraging water conservation and storage, and directing development, residential and commercial, towards cities and towns. I'd also like to second John's notion of more completely planned areas, but in particular, the idea of extending the Metow Valley more completely planned area to include the entire watershed, for the reasons that John stated very well. And then also, I think an area that is really missing in the current draft is policies which address ridge top development and the protection for dark skies. I mean, I think these are issues that are really dawning more upon us as growth and development continues at such a rate. We are already experiencing the ridge top development, which is, in some cases, really inappropriate and detracts from the rural character of this area. And similarly, I think that the county could really take some important steps to encourage a more conscientious use of lighting, so that we can really all continue to enjoy the beautiful night skies that are so characteristic of this area. There are many more issues. I know you're receiving lots of very eloquent testimony, and I just, I look at the list of names in front of me, and it just, it makes me feel really proud of the way in which we as a community are participating in this incredibly important process. So thank you again, and I very much look forward to seeing the next version. Thanks.
I don't see him on here anywhere.
Barry, are you still with us? I will allow time later if you get back online. Next up, Laura Super.
Hi, this is Laura Super, sound check.
Sounds okay.
Can you hear me, Albert?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm the program director for the Metow Valley Citizens Council, and we did submit comments today, so I will withhold further comment until I have a chance to speak.
Next up, Mary Lagacia.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I also submitted written comments, but I would love to take just a couple of minutes to reiterate some of the sentiments that I'm hearing and bring my own personal experiences to this. I want to thank, go ahead.
Where do you live, please?
I live in Metow. I am in the Lower Metow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to thank you for the thoughtful and considered approach that the Planning Commission and Director Palmer are taking on this process. It ultimately affects each and every one of us in this county, and it deserves the careful approach that you are taking, so thank you very much. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to submit comments and to participate in this. I really want to strongly support your recognition and intention to work in collaboration and partnership with the indigenous people of our county, the Colville Confederated Tribes and the Yakima Nations. While I appreciate the inclusion of this language, I'm really anxious to see about how you're going to implement it, because it's, it's well and good to say you're going to do something, but it's in the doing that it is powerful. So I really look forward to seeing where this is going to go. The vision statement, the revised vision statement is really powerful, and I think if you keep that in front of you, and always, literally in your vision, you will be, you will be able to make wise decisions in this process. Water, 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 water. I mean, what can we say? We all depend on it, everything depends on it. Our economy, our lives, the agriculture, the rural nature of where we live. Really want to see more direction and measures for water conservation and storage, and the equitable distribution of water. Limiting the development of people in this valley, and the drawdown on our precious, limited resources, without threatening the fish and the wildlife and agriculture and the people who depend on it. We're at a critical place, and I ask you to really proceed with great thought and consideration of what the long-term impacts are going to be, considering the impacts of climate change. As a resident of the local, of the Lower Metow, someone who lives in the train wreck, thank you, John, I really appreciated that. Genuinely, I appreciated that comment, because I'm living in it, and I feel it acutely down here. Please don't leave us out of the more completely planned area. We are a part of this watershed, and we have to be considered. I'm asking you to remove the language about acknowledging that agricultural lands will be converted to other uses. That's a setup right there. Just get rid of that, please. Let's acknowledge that agricultural lands is what makes us here, that is what makes us so unique, and what everybody recognizes when they drive into this area or they first come to visit it. It is us. Protect our wildlife, increase our protections for fish and wildlife by complying with the Growth Management Act, and make sure that we respect all of nature and all of the sentient beings that live here with us. Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much for commenting. Next up is Melanie Rowland.
Can you hear me? This is Melanie Rowland.
Yes, and please state where you're from.
Yes, I will. My name is Melanie Rowland, and I live south of Twisp on the Twisp Carlton Road. And I too would like to appreciate, to express my appreciation for all of the work that goes into creating a plan like we are commenting on. This is such an improvement over the 2014 plan, as everyone has said, and we know that it is due to the work of the Planning Department. Excuse me, and thank you very much for that. I have only a couple of things I want to emphasize. First, I very strongly support Alternative Four, because I think Alternative Four is the one that incorporates most of the values that the people who have spoken so far this evening are urging be protected in the Comprehensive Plan. There are a couple of pieces of Alternative Four that I would like to highlight. One of them is, actually, two of them are what John Crandall first raised, and they are quite related. I think the critical areas ordinance is very important to be up to date, both in terms of the information, the scientific information on which it is based, and the protection of the critical areas that are presented on the basis of the scientific information. So I very much appreciate Pete Palmer saying that you are going to get right to work on the critical areas ordinance. And again, I know you guys have been working really hard on this, and that's another biggie, but it is very, very important. And one particularly important piece of that is, and I'm just echoing everybody else here, but I will add my voice to saying how important water is to everything about the Metow Valley and Okanagan County, important for fish, wildlife, agriculture, residents, you name it, it's absolutely the basis for everything. And we very much want this Comprehensive Plan to reflect an integration of consideration of water resources and desires for how we use the land, and what happens to our valley and the county, and have it stay rural. The issues of water quantity and water quality are connected, they're not separate issues. And climate change enters into this because less water quantity, which we can expect through climate change, plus higher air temperatures equals warmer water. And that's what John referred to. And that is simply something that will not support the current endangered and threatened fish and all of the ecosystem that, the ecosystems that are part of that water. So that is something that really needs to be taken into account. And then, in addition, for part of the critical areas ordinances, ordinance, as well as supporting water quantity and quality in the face of climate change, we need to protect wildlife corridors. That is something very important in terms of where are we going to put houses. I think most people are supporting the majority of new growth going near cities and towns, and that's terrific, because we need to preserve room to move in terms of the wildlife that we have here, and room for them to have access to water as well. And finally, I will add my voice to wanting the extension of the Metow Valley more completely planned area to the lower valley. It is all one watershed, and that, and we're all connected. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we will go back to the beginning and see, Isabel, are you on the line yet?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay, I tried everything, it finally worked, something did. So I did submit written comments, but I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to especially comment on some of the other comments that were made. So I'm free to go.
Once you state your name and where you're from, for the record, please.
Isabel Spoon. I live in Twisp. I also am a land owner in the Lower Metow Valley. My address is post office, box 24, Twisp. My address is post office, Box 24, Twisp. So, I'll be commenting on only sub-areas and sub-units tonight. Please see the comments in the draft comprehensive plan that I submitted today, which are essential to understanding what I'm going to say. I'd like to support everything John Crandall said, especially on this topic, particularly getting the people who live in the prospective sub-areas or sub-units involved right now. I advocate for you adding to this comprehensive plan deadlines by which you will have advisory groups appointed, especially to update the Metow Valley, or the Metow Valley Plan of 1976, which has not been updated, and the Lower Valley to have a Lower Valley Advisory Committee appointed. I also support the comments of Katie Haven, who made several corrections that were really important to the comp plan. So, I'd like to say I really appreciate the changes that were made in the process of creating the sub-areas, because the current requirements made it almost impossible. Next, I'd like to clarify the difference between a sub-area and a sub-unit. They seem to be used interchangeably in the document, and that causes a lot of confusion, and it does matter. The one and only real sub-area in the county is the Metow Valley More Completely Planned Area, which includes approximately the northern half of the Metow Valley. Sub-unit A is a small portion of that more completely planned area. It's a sub-unit rather than a sub-area. Sub-units A, B, C, and D were outlined on the map on Page 10 of the Metow Valley Plan I submitted for this hearing, so I hope you have a copy to look at. If the Lower Valley were to be included, it could easily become Sub-unit E or Sub-units E and F. Many people have commented, especially in the last comment session and in the 2019 sessions, about extending the Metow Valley More Completely Planned Area. Twenty-four percent of the commenters chose this as an essential item and supported that action. But on Page 45, it stated that the goals and policies developed within a more completely planned area adopted by the county shall apply only to the geographic area of the MCPA, as the Board of County Commissioners has defined its geographic boundaries at the time of MCPA plan adoption. Please remove those words, "at the time of MCPA plan adoption." Those prevent the extension of the more completely planned area. So, it's been 45 years since the Metow Valley Plan was written. An advisory group was appointed to update the plan in 1975, and there's no evidence it met. In 2009, it was promised that the plans would be updated, that were not updated then, and they haven't been updated now. So, how many years will we kick the can down the road? I found myself asking myself what we're waiting for, maybe the next ice age or something? So, deadlines now in the comp plan for advisory committees to be formed would be a very, very good idea. I wanted to also say that there are four criteria that the commissioners or the Planning Commission, in my opinion, it should be the Planning Commission, are to consider in forming these sub-areas. And I wanted to just...
One minute.
Hello?
One minute.
Okay. The logical, natural, and physical boundaries, et cetera, these are well-established. Highways, it's one watershed. One controversy that's been going on for decades is where would the southern boundary be of the more completely planned area? We now have a good line on the map, and it's called the Zone of Columbia River Influence. I would propose that the more completely planned area extend to that point. Landowner interest, you have a picture that I submitted of meetings in the Lower Metow, two meetings, last year in 2019, in which the three of you Planning Commissioners attended. I'd like to ask you, did you think there was landowner interest? I think the picture shows the landowner interest, and certainly the two years of extensive work by the landowners of the Metow Valley from Goldcrake on South on the Lower Valley Advisory Committee show that. Okay, thank you very much for listening.
So, we have Easton Branham.
I don't believe my comments were submitted on time, so I just have a few notes for you. I'm a relatively new valley resident. I think I am more than what you can call...
Can you state your name and where you live, please, for the record?
Yes.
And speak up, please.
Okay. My name is Easton Branham. I live in the Twisp River area of Twisp. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you can now. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I am a relatively new resident to this area. I think I'm probably part of the latest boom of residents, and so I just have a couple of thoughts as somebody who is also an Army Combat Veteran and who spent a good four years of my life working to defend interests overseas and as a part of the military.
You're fading away a little bit.
That's too bad. Is this more clear?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'll just try to get to the point. As an Army Veteran who is living in a rural area, I can see how important our natural resources are, and I have seen how exploited those resources can become if we aren't careful with them. So, when I look at this plan, I'm really excited to see the work that you're doing, thinking about the future. I do have a couple of suggestions for you. For some reason, the draft comprehensive plan excludes about 20 years of the most recent population data. So, on Table 1, there's no data provided after the year 2000. I think including the most recent 20 years of data is really important when we're talking about planning for the future. And I also would love to see some data that captures real estate sales trends in the entire study area, because this is really critical when we try to figure out what's on the planning horizon. So, this data is pretty weak, and I would love to see it sort of beefed up. On Page 9 of the draft comprehensive plan, it reads agriculture and forestry are the major economic generators for the county and are the foundation for the region. From what I can tell, tourism and income from recreation are also major economic generators and foundational sectors of employment. So, I think it would be important to include data on jobs in that sector and make sure that we're actually acknowledging the impact of that in our economy, because it's quite large in this county as a whole. Let's see. I'm a small farmer, and I also wanted to just put attention on how important it is to diversify the definition of agriculture in a county like this to include small-scale, locally-owned farms. So, currently, on Page 16, under the Water Resource Inventory Area Goals and Objectives, somebody else has already mentioned that there's an explicit acknowledgement that agriculture lands will be converted to other uses. But there's also a limit on parcel size. So, currently, only parcels five acres or more are considered for inclusion in the agricultural resource designation. And I think when we look at economic drivers, we look at small farms and small farmers and small businesses. This is an oversight that excludes a really valuable, small-scale agricultural resources because of the lot size designation. So, I would offer that that could be amended. And then, my last comment for you all. Again, I really appreciated reading through this plan, because I am a planner by trade. There's a problem with Alternative 2 and 3 using outdated and unrealistic data. So, talking about historically modest growth levels and market demand, that's a quote, there's really no benefit to plan for levels of growth that have already been surpassed. And we see in this county, the largest county in Washington State, increasing pressure, which is also acknowledged in the comprehensive plan on Page 9. It reads, "OMAC, the Regional Center for Services and Trade, is experiencing a great deal of growth. There is also increasing development pressure in the area between the Canadian border and Oroville." I would also suggest that we address the rapid growth of the Metow Valley. And really, when we talk about alternatives, we have to follow through with sort of the planning guidelines. And so, to use outdated, historically modest growth levels really sort of invalidates the purpose of Alternatives 2 and 3. So, I have to also say that Alternative 4 appears to be the most realistic and completely panned alternative. Was that my one minute, sir?
Yes.
Well, thank you. So, just winding down, also, as an Army Veteran, I know the importance of dark sky protection. It's often really important for military exercises, for purposes of viewing the sky. There's a lot of economic benefits from additional tourism and investments from government agencies if you do have dark sky status. So, I also appreciate that Alternative 4 addresses ridge top development and dark sky status. So, thank you all very much. I'm excited to be here.
All right. Okay, so we have some time left. Let's see.
The ones that have stars, I couldn't get them.
Barry Stromberger, are you back online yet?
As you showed up.
Well, let's see. Those who have delayed, first one, Dick Ewing.
Yes, I'll go ahead and list my comments. I'm Dick Ewing. I live in Winthrop off of Twin Lakes Road, and I would like to submit these comments on behalf of the Farm Bureau. So, the first point I would like to make is I noticed that in the introduction to the comprehensive plan, issues relating to the 2014 plan were discussed, but they were not identified, and the plan does not really develop how you would answer those issues. That was also due in the draft DEIS addendum. There was not a clear statement of issues and what alternative you preferred to address those issues. The comprehensive plan does not discuss or elaborate the public-private relationship in the land use element, critical to maintaining the resource aspect of our economy. There were no new maps or maps provided associated with the presentation of this version of the comprehensive plan, and no discussion of the general distribution and location of various land uses as required in RCW 3670 330. There was no discussion of existing categories of public and private land use in the plan, such as you have in the district use chart in Chapter 17 of the zoning code. There are no standards of population density or building intensity, and there is no development in the water resource section on how water use relates to existing law and watershed plans or the plan addendum. In summary, I would like to point out that the plan lacks how you will balance the human activities of economy, custom, and culture with the environmental concerns. It's highly biased in one way. So, you need to complete a more good understanding of that aspect of our use and living in Okanagan County. So, those are my eight points I'd like you to consider. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dick. Next up, Laura Super.
Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Laura Super. I'm Program Director for the Metow Valley Citizens Council. Our office is in Twisp. I'll be brief, because I know you're going to be reading all nine pages of our comments. I don't need to tell the Planning Commission, because you've all been working for many years, or most of you have been working for many years, that this effort to adopt a comprehensive plan has been going on for a very long time. I've personally been engaged since 2007, working with various communities, mostly in the Metow Valley, not always for the Citizens Council, working with planning staff and elected officials on trying to get a plan that supports the vision of the many communities in the county, and also recognizes our resource constraints and does a good job of planning for the future. I know we're all ready to get this behind us. We're now in the hands of the Second Planning Director, the Third Board of County Commissioners. We have some new Planning Commission members. I really commend the planning staff for their work trying to get this across the line. From our perspective, this plan is very close. I appreciate the work that planning staff have done with your input to make changes, to hear our concerns. The vision statement in the comprehensive plan is wonderfully inclusive. We appreciate the effort, the attempt to address water issues, the efforts to address wildfire and other issues, and the recognition of the need to work with tribes. To be a legal document, the plan still needs a bit of editing, not a lot. It does need some help. I hope that you read our comments and the comments of Futurewise very carefully, because we did provide some language suggestions to try to get it there, and I don't think that those are substantial. Some of it may appear to be semantic, and we would be happy to work with you on that or answer questions. To be a truly good plan that's reflective of the desires expressed by the majority of the public comments that have been received throughout the 14-year history of this effort, the plan does need to include some additional concepts, and these are all included in the fourth alternative that MVCC proposed. And I would speak to those, but I think that many of the other speakers this evening have articulated it far better than I can, the elements that are included in Alternative I also support the statements made by Easton and others that update in the data that's in the plan, particularly to population growth in the past 20 years, would help to support Alternative 4. And finally, the DEIS addendum as written is insufficient, and I don't think any of us want to spend a lot of time wrangling over that. I know that the planning staff is very busy dealing with the many applications that are coming in the door and all of the other planning issues in front of them. So, I would really encourage the county to hire somebody to fix the SEPA documents, rewrite them so that they're legal, take the load off the planning staff, and just get that part done, and let the planning staff focus with your body on fixing the comprehensive plan, because that's within everybody's reach. Thanks again for your time.
All right. Okay, that concludes the list of those people who indicated they wish to speak. Okay, that concludes the list of those people who indicated they wish to speak. We are conferring on technical issues at the moment. Give us a minute or two, please.
If they're not on the phone, they can raise their hand. They're on the computer.
Okay, so those on the computers that have not spoken yet and wish to, please raise your hand on the computer, however you do that, and we will try to get you in.
Okay, and how you raise your hand is you just hover over next to your name, and there'll be a little hand that pops up, and then you can click on it, and it'll raise your hand.
Okay, well, we have not had anybody else indicate they wish to speak. And with that, Mr. Chairman, from the public viewing, according to our printout, there's 116 individuals that have commented in writing. They might want to know that. Okay. Well, as of last Friday, I think we had five comments, and as of this afternoon, we had over 120 written comments. So for all those who have written in, thank you very much for participating. I believe with that, we will close the public testimony, and this will be both the verbal comments and the written comments will end this evening. Those that we've gotten, we thank you very much. At this time, I will see if staff has anything to say for next steps. Like I said, we have over 120 written comments, and we do not read that fast, so we are going to look those over, and we will debate those at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is March
Do you have anything further?
Okay. At this point, is there any of the commission members wish to say anything?
Yeah, this is Gina McCoy. I just have a question about the table of contents, which is really confusing. So the planning department is aware of that, because it refers to like 80 pages, and there's 59 or something. So maybe you could clarify that a little bit.
Yes, thank you, Gina. This is Director Palmer. We are aware of the mix-up in the page numbering on the content pages there, and those will be corrected before we finalize the draft. There's going to be a lot of probably more corrections done before it's finalized, so that is on our readers' set of page numbers.
Sure, but there's also some sections missing out of this.
There is no sections missing. The plan only goes through page 58.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for that comment about the pages. I appreciate that. I couldn't get Are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
The only comment I have to say, and it's not driving toward or anything to anybody, but all we heard from was the Metow Valley. I haven't had a chance, at least 320 comments. Is there any other, as Restha County, as you got these, is Restha County representative of these written comments, or do you have any idea?
So I was in the table of contents, which is right at the beginning of your file of comments there. There, I went down and put everybody's name that submitted a written comment, and if it said where they were from, I noted that also. So you'll see the majority of the comments that did come in are from the Metow Valley citizens. There's a few, but most of them are from Washaw, Department of Ecology, Yakima Nation, Highlands Associate, Department of Commerce. Otherwise, they mostly come from Winthrop, a few from Carlton area.
Right. That was my biggest concern, is just like a lot of the people that I've talked to in my part of the area had no clue this was going on. And they weren't about to try to do anything electronically, because they don't have the internet to support it at home. I really feel that we're missing out on a large part of the county being able to comment. And I mentioned that last meeting, and I just want to reiterate that now, because I think it's skewed to one area way too much. And I don't know how we're going to rectify that. Can we leave comments open until our next meeting for written, so those people can have an opportunity if they get word to them? Or are we just going to wait until, you know, just the county commissioners have a hearing? Because I really think we're missing a lot of people that don't even know this is happening.
I agree with you.
I do, too.
And I think it's, the comments are skewed to one area, and it's, there's a lot of people saying, "Why are you messing with it? 14's fine." I've heard that probably 40 times in the last month. But, you know, you're not getting that tonight. So, and the people that have that attitude are living in areas where they don't have internet to support this. It's mostly satellite internet, and they burn most of their data for one meeting. So, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I just have a question really in here. Is there organizations up there that we could coordinate?
I tried, but everybody's in the middle of cabbages here. It's really a tough time right now to get people to think about anything else. That's a poor excuse, but, for example, I've been home two nights in the last six nights, so it's awful hard to be on the phone talking to people when you're standing out in the middle of a bird's house. But that's a side point. I just want to reiterate that I think when we've had public hearings before, we've had a lot of ranchers, portraitists, farmers in the audience. They get up, they say their piece, and they're dead. They're not going to write down in comments. They're not going to mess with the computer. And we haven't seen a single one of those. And I think we're going to have to keep that in the back of our head as we go forward, because we're missing a huge group of people to vote in.
This is Director Palmer. And you're right, we are missing a big part of the population, but I don't know how to pull these people in that don't make this their priority the same way that the people from the Metow have. Angela did after the last meeting, you brought this up, she did take the time to reach out to some of those special interest groups. Rod Inlow was one of those people that she specifically reached out to. We've met all of the advertising requirements. We've even, you know, we got it on the radio. The only thing we didn't do is a full-blown article in the newspapers. I don't see the Metow newspaper to see if they had anything written in their newspaper about the comprehensive plan and the upcoming hearing. But again, you know, I encourage the planning commission to reach out to these people. I'm sure you know you have a target audience that you're thinking about, and try to get them to just take a minute and jot down a few concerns that they might have, or, you know, take a look at it. The planning, the Board of County Commissioners did indicate that they will be holding another public hearing following this, for because it's such a big interest plan is the reason why they're doing that, even though they're not required to. This is the only public hearing that's required to happen. It would be technically a public meeting, but they did have the option of a public hearing, and they're going to take that option and hold one. It's going to be at a later date, obviously.
Hopefully, we'll be able to have in-person, because I've made probably 100 phone calls since the last meeting, and I couldn't get anybody to write anything down. I couldn't, there was no way they were going to testify over a computer. But they would have been willing to come in and talk in person. So, you know, that's, you know.
Well, hopefully, you'll be able to get the message across town, whereas it is that they waste their opinions at this point in the process.
But like I say, they would have to go to a special area to be able to have enough internet to be able to do this. So that, you know, it's, I have no idea what to do about it. I just wanted to reiterate that we're missing a big section of people that normally comment on this sort of stuff. I'll let it go with that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So yes, that is a problem, and it's highly exacerbated by the masks and the mandates there. But the good thing is, is that commissioners will have a hearing, and at the rate that bureaucracy goes, the pandemic should be over by then. So.
Yeah, well, I hope it's not going in 10 years.
So, like I said, we've closed the public comment, both verbal and written, for the Planning Commission, and we will take the time between now and the 22nd to read the comments that we did receive, and we will resume deliberation on March 22nd, 7:00 PM on the con-plan, and decide what we want to do then. One other item of business for next meeting is election of officers and whatever else staff has for us to do. With nothing else on the agenda at the moment, I will close the meeting at 8:34. Thank you, everybody, for participating and coming out. Hopefully, we'll get this figured out and
Well, yeah, but it's just like, oh, we have, well, it's based on the meeting like this. The data would be gone for all month, you know? I mean, I'm well aware.
Yeah, sorry, everybody. We do have new staff, and I wanted to introduce, we got Camden Irwin. He's working in our GIS department. And then you guys all met Morgan at the last.
I'm Rocky. I'm new.
No, you're not.
Yeah, nice try.
You can put on a mask, but you can't hide.
So you're not doing homework?
No, I'm not doing. Well, I know, see, the thing is, is I...